Jake, is Charlotte coming tonight? Yeah, okay.
Yep. Unless she was planning on it if the tennis match went long, it was a home match. So I would assume they'll be done in time, but if if it went along for some reason, she would will probably not get here.
Okay. So we are just missing Jose because Steve won't be here tonight. I don't know who else you're waiting for Jake.
Jake Schutz was gonna jump on. But if it's six o'clock, I would suggest we we go ahead.
All right. Okay, I would like to call the Mount Greylock Regional School District School Committee to order. It is Thursday, May 11th, 2023, 6:00 PM. We are meeting remotely via Zoom. The meeting will be broadcast on Willingnut TV Channel 1302 in Williamstown. It will also be posted to the Mount Greylock Regional School District YouTube page within 24 hours of the meeting and on willingnet.org. If our school committee could roll call in please alphabetically by last name.
Bowen here.
Conry here.
Constantine here.
Elfenbein here.
Green here.
Malloy here.
Hey, thank you. And Steve is absent. At Mount Greylock Regional School District, our mission is to create a community of learners working together in a safe and challenging learning environment that encourages restore restorative-based processes, respect, inclusive diversity, courtesy, integrity, and responsibility through high expectations and cooperation resulting in lifelong learning and personal growth. Next on our agenda is public comment. And I do need to check quickly to see if we have any public comment on our spreadsheet. While I am checking that, would any members of the public like to make public comment? Okay, I don't see anyone signed up. And I don't see anyone. I see Charlotte. Hi, Charlotte. Okay, so.
Christine, I do see a hand.
Oh, you do? Thank you.
Hi there. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thanks. Um, I wanted to ask about the future of DEIB work. I know there was we were disappointed that the DEIB coordinator position wasn't funded going forward and was curious to hear about plans for continuing that work, what that plan would look like, who would be responsible, anything that could be commented on. Thank you.
Thanks, Selena. The way, just as an FYI, the way we do public comment is we allow public commenters and we asked for the agenda item, which clearly you were speaking to the superintendent report. So we will be hearing from the superintendent later on that item. Thank you for your comment. Okay. Next up on the agenda is our student update, and I'm gonna turn it over to Charlotte.
Hi, everyone. Sorry for the location change. I'm currently at a tennis match that just finished. It was against Pope Francis as a home match and we won. For student council, there has been a couple of things we've been working on. First, it was teacher appreciation and para appreciation. We went and made personalized cards for everyone, worked on the bulletin board and made sure students knew to say thank you for all of the great work that they do for us. For the most part, we have been focusing on the upcoming student government elections that will take place next week, which includes student council, president, vice president, secretary, treasurer, and this year there's a new position of getting to go to the state government day. And that will be occurring Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday for each grade during direct studies. They need 25 signatures and a speech to be to be possible to run. For some of our subcommittees, the feminine hygiene had great success in finding a solution between the misuse of products for the and the need of them in the bathrooms. They are now available in the all-gendered bathrooms and some of the girls' bathrooms. For Greylock Talks, they brought in two Williams College students in this past month from Greek, Greece, and Kazakhstan. And both they had great turnout with a mandatory presence from the seventh grade direct studies. For sports, spring sports have been nearing their Western Mass and State tournaments that will with great statewide statewide rankings. Softball has had a great season with a home match day while track and field dominates other schools with their huge team of over 150 students and a meet tomorrow and a meet a home meet yesterday. Tennis is still undefeated for the girls with 11 and O. And I think that is all I have for tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Charlotte. We love the location. It's beautiful. Okay, next up, approval of minutes. I would like to make a motion to approve the April 13th, 2023 minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Curtis seconds. Any discussion on these minutes?
Carrie. Thanks, Christina. I had a comment on the page. I'm just trying to find it. The pages aren't numbered. Okay, section, item seven. The last sentence in item seven, a stabilization fund is encouraged target 100,000. However, of each town, dot, dot, dot. I don't know where that 100,000 comes from. It shouldn't be there. And a stabilization fund is not, it's not that we're encouraging it. It's a warrant article for each town. So I'm not sure how we want to fix that. So there, but in that same box, it says there's a track and field warrant article regarding borrowing. We're in the process of creating a 501(c)(3). So maybe we should just say that a stabilization fund warrant article will be up for vote in each town, something like that.
Well, yeah, I think that sounds like a good correction.
Okay.
Any other comments or corrections on those minutes? Okay, all in favor?
Bowen, I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfenbein, I.
Green, I.
I think we lost.
Malloy, I. Sorry. Nope.
Route seven. Gateway there. Approval. Okay, thank you. That motion passes. Okay, next up on the agenda, principal updates. And we have a Vienna, Germany trip on the schedule with Jackie and Patrick.
Hi, yes. Good to see you all. Christina, I don't know if I could, if I could share my screen. We have a little bit of a presentation that I swear will not take very long.
You should have the ability to do that now. Let me know.
Let's just make sure it works. Okay. So hi, I'm Jackie Vanette and Patrick O'Connell is on the call as well. He'll be chiming in too. We're the music teachers at Mount Greylock. And we we, we've started to explore the idea of taking a trip sponsored by or through the EF Tours Company, which has been used at Mount Greylock in the past. We, we've done a lot of research. We've been working closely with EF, specifically Cleo Murphy is our agent. And we are looking at potentially taking a trip to Vienna, Salzburg, and Munich in the spring of 2025. So our idea here is that the trip would be open to performing arts students in grades nine through 12. And highlights from this trip would include a trip to the Haus der Musik, a music history themed guided tour through Vienna and a visit to Mozart Mozart's birthplace in Salzburg, as well as a Sound of Music tour through Salzburg based on the Rodgers and Hammerstein musical and movie. And I'm sure you're probably wondering like, why, why would they want to do this? This seems crazy. Take a bunch of kids, teenagers to Europe. But our reasoning for this, I mean, we have a lot of curricular connections that Patrick is going to touch on and elaborate on. But the, aside from being kind of a recruitment and retention idea during COVID, the restrictions that were in place. I know everybody had it really difficult during COVID teaching remotely and teaching with, you know, masks and spacing and things like that. But I think music is one of those subjects that definitely did not translate well to a different environment. And when we think back to what our students were going through at that time, remote rehearsals through Zoom on mute, but still playing, or the thought of singing in chorus, but for a while we weren't actually allowed to sing. We were outside for many times. Once it got too cold, we had chorus lessons that we learned piano instead, but it definitely wasn't the same. And those kids really, really missed out. So we would like to give them an opportunity to, to get that community building back to, to experience music in a different way, in a, in a much more hands-on way to experience that culture, that history. And to really to, to, I guess, reward their resiliency for, for sticking with it throughout the difficulties. And I'll let Patrick go into the, the curricular connections that align with the Massachusetts arts frameworks.
Excellent. Yeah. So in connection with those state standards, in preparation for this trip, we would include composers in our fall and winter programs, which are associated with these August cities. Just to give some examples, Hayden in Mozart, in Beethoven with Vienna, of course Mozart's birthplace being in Salzburg and Richard, Richard Strauss in Munich. And through walking the streets of the cities, I hope students, we hope students will connect with the composers and their music with the cultural context, the language and the architecture. And I think it'll be a profound experience for the students to realize that the certain pieces of music, you know, famous pieces were intended by the composer to be performed in these particular halls with their specific acoustics. And additionally, observing like the bucolic landscapes in the surrounding areas will bring students to appreciate even more regarding the sources of the inspiration from any of the pieces in the classical canon from Bach up to Mahler. Right. So one perfect example is Beethoven's Sixth Symphony, which is the Pastoral Symphony, and it begins by invoking the German countryside. And lastly, this trip to Europe will immerse students in the culture and history, which produced some of the great works of music ever made. And the students will never forget them. These memories of visiting the locations and connecting it with this, with this beloved music. So Jackie, I'll send it back to you.
Sure. And of course, this trip, you know, it's, it would never be obviously like a required thing. But we understand that it's, it would be an expensive trip. On the screen, you can see the, the, the cost. It depends on how many students sign up. Our goal is to get at least 30 to 39, and we think we can do that. Our numbers for next year in terms of our ensemble enrollment has gone up and it's continuing to go up. I'm, we're, we're very appreciative of our elementary feeder programs to, to be helping our numbers. So we, we recognize though that it's, it's pretty expensive and we want to do all that we can to make that still accessible for everyone. Music lends itself. It makes it a little bit easier than say, English class to fundraise. We, we hope to use lots of different fundraising tactics, whether it be concert fundraisers such as concessions or dinner concerts. Our jazz band is ready to perform donations even at concerts, something that we could explore. We're hoping to maybe host some events, some extra performances. We are hoping for some school-based fundraisers. Our choir is ready to go with singing telegrams on Valentine's Day. It's something that they were ready to do this year too. Music, MG music gear or items. The elementary school is doing the penny wars right now. It's, it's going well from what I hear. And then of course, community-based fundraisers, the more traditional car washes, bottle drives, sponsored program drives, things like that. We're ready to go and we're trying to do this two years in advance so that we can fundraise as much as possible to lower that cost for everyone. So I think that's all we've got. If you have any questions, we are more than happy to, to chime in.
Thank you. Does the committee have questions for Jackie and Patrick? Carrie.
So I'll raise one of my usual questions, which is about the cost. And then I have another question about sustainability. So in your fundraising, will each student be responsible for fundraising their own amount? Or are you doing this all collectively where it sounds like most of the fundraising is collective? And whatever is raised will be distributed in some way amongst all the students? Is that right?
Yes, I think in most cases, everything is going to be collective. The way that EF runs, from what I understand, is that each student gets kind of an account. And what they can do if they want to go out kind of on their own and request for birthdays or holidays from grandparents or aunts and uncles that they can contribute to their account specifically. But I think the, the most equitable way to do things would be for our fundraisers to, to be split evenly to, to, to generally lo- lower the cost for everyone. I think some states have different requirements. I'm not sure of the Massachusetts requirements in terms of how fundraising money can be used, whether it's individual or collectively. But we would lean toward collective no matter what.
Thank you. And then my other question is about sustainability and the effect of international travel. I think a lot of folks are trying to be more aware of the impact on the environment with plane travel and trying to reduce such things. Just wondering if you can speak to, and you've already done this to an extent, but have you considered domestic travel to Boston Symphony, New York Philharmonic, you know, a tour of domestic concert halls? I mean, we have some incredible concert halls all over the country, which is not to say that that's the same thing as going to the birthplace of Beethoven or Mahler or any of those folks, but just wondering why international versus domestic?
I mean, I guess I can take a stab at this, Jackie. Well, I think for, for my perspective, just, actually, I remember this is almost the very similar tour that I did in, in high school. It was to, it was to Germany, Austria, and the Czech Republic to Prague. And it was really a formative experience for me. And to be honest with you, I've never gone back because I have never been able to go back because I didn't have people fundraising for me. So, so I think that was, I think that's part of the reason I'd love to get this as a once in a lifetime opportunity to get the kids there and and to get them excited early about music. Because, you know, I mean, I'd rather get them excited about early about, you know, this kind of, you know, this music now rather than when they're 80, you know? So that, that's kind of, that's, that's my only bottom, right? Because you make up a great point, and I felt the same way about about plane travel, cutting back on it. I never really did much of it anyway, so it's easy for me to say. But, but yeah, so that is a valid concern. I totally understand that. But that's my only way I, I, I'm thinking off the cuff, but Jackie, you can go for that.
Yeah, and I was thinking similar in the sense of students in our communities can access Tanglewood and they can access, you know, the Boston or Albany symphonies in a much easier way. And I don't think this is a trip that many families will take. I know growing up for me, my parents still have no idea of what music really is. My parents come to my concerts and they still ask me why the kids really need a conductor and am I really necessary? So I think, you know, the thought, I, I know that they would have never thought to, to bring me to a music, you know, like a guided tour of music, like historical music places. And this is something that I think kids might not ever get the, the chance to do again. Whereas we can take them, you know, we can take them to Albany. We can take them to Boston. And so can their, their parents. And later on, they can, they can do that too. But I think we want to, to give them something that is, could potentially be a life-changing event. And we're, we're really excited for it.
Thank you both. That's very helpful. Jose and then Julia, I think.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you both. And as a parent of a seventh grader who's benefited from your guidance and instruction and patience, I'm always grateful and, and also excited by, by this trip for, for for my kid. The question I have is one that I think is pertinent to this trip, but also to a lot of the international trips that we want to provide those types of experiences that I agree are, can be transformative, can be, you know, truly impactful in, in a deep, meaningful way and are hard to replicate, you know? Being in a, a setting where you're, you're hearing a different language spoken and a different way of being all around you. I think it's, it's incredible. The, the concern I have are for families who, even with the fundraising, wouldn't be able to, to cover the cost to help their kids make this trip. And this is maybe a general question because I trying to imagine an answer and I, and I can't imagine one, but is, is there something that we can do as a district or something we can do as a community? Or something that we should be doing to help our families who, who aren't in a position to be able to cover the costs of this trip? Maybe, maybe any, any any of the costs of this trip? Yeah, Jake.
Thank you, Jose. And that's a, that is a question I've been working to field appropriately for years and years and years. To, to me, one of the best things that trip sponsors, you know, the teachers that run these trips can do to make these trips more accessible for everyone is to be really, really out in front of them in terms of, of time. I, I believe this trip is April of 2025. Am I right, Patrick and Jackie of my, yeah?
That's correct.
That, that to me, in a, in a perfect world, absolutely, we, we would facilitate that happening for any student that wanted or needed that level of facilitation. Short of that, because I'm not sure that's, that's realistic and I'm, and I'm not absolutely sure it would, it would even be legal, but short of that, giving students lots and lots and lots of lead time to, to consider where this falls in terms of their own priorities. If, if they are old enough to have a part-time job or to have a summer job, two years of lead time gives, you know, ample time to really do some savings for this. If, if it's, you know, if we're talking about a ninth grader, you know, since, since you brought up your son, yeah, he, he although I was struck by how tall he is, standing next to him in the cafeteria today, he, he is a seventh grader and, and probably not going to have a job that pays a ton of money this summer or, or even next summer. So for, for older students, just having a couple of years to hit it and be thinking about it. I know we discussed as a committee looking to do some sort of fundraising to create a fund or a foundation that could help support this, that's, that's an option. On the other hand, I've been really struck this year as we've struggled with funding things that we really want and need and, and looking at building projects and, and other types of things that are going on of, of how much fundraising actually happens in these two communities right now. And folks get hit hard, hard and often. So I, I don't know what the answer is. I it's, it's the answer to most of the hard things that, that you all wind up discussing. In a perfect world, it wouldn't be an issue. We would just write a check. But I, I think the other side of that conversation is do we, do we want to take away opportunities for everybody because it may not be realistic for, for some folks? And that's a, that's a difficult bridge to, to cross as well. So I, not a very satisfactory answer, but I'm very appreciative that Jackie and Patrick are looking at really literally like 22 months of lead time on this to, to if, if they get a yes tonight, the, that hourglass for, for a student, some ability to, to come up with this money gets turned over and, and.
And I should add, if we do, you know, the approval, we have a tentative date for an informational meeting set in June. I think the first week of June, if this goes through so that we can get started as soon as possible, we will have flyers at the concert next week to, to, if, if it goes through so that parents can start planning as soon as possible. And we are going to do everything we can to fundraise. I think the arts, we, like I said earlier, we have it a little bit easier in terms of fundraising rather than to say a, a, a typical, traditional academic class where it's hard for an English class to get together and figure out how to fundraise something. Whereas we, we have kids that have a lot of talent who are willing to put themselves out there and and, and help raise, you know, funds for, for everything. So I think, like I said, we will, we will do all that we can to lower that cost as much as possible. We're, we're ready to go. We've got a list. We're brainstorming. And we'll start putting it in action as early this summer.
Thank you. Julia, I think you were next. And then Ursula has her hand up.
Great. Thank you. Two quick things and then maybe a longer question more to the school committee than to Jackie and Patrick. One is on the form that you gave us. It looks like three chaperones or maybe TBA could be as many as needed for the potentially. Okay, I just wanted to confirm.
It's a six to one ratio.
That's what I, thank you. The second one, just to put a plug in this, but I don't know why it doesn't happen more often, but for anyone listening or for your students, which is not music oriented, but good fundraising could be raking leaves and shoveling sidewalks. Or anyway, I'm just naming a couple of other bigger ticket ways to fundraise. But all that said, I really want to make sure as a school committee, we are consistent with how we discussed the international trips before. And I don't necessarily remember the, I mean, I know we had a very involved conversation about this and I, and we're collectively worried about the equity issue that Jose raised. And I appreciate my initial thought was similar to Jake's that a two-year effectively or a 22-month lead time plus the fundraising could hopefully make this available to as many as possible. I just want to under, I, I'm asking my committee members to help keep all of us honest or consistent. And if folks can remember how we, I know we had two others that have already come before us. And I'm wondering if there's any reminders that we can make sure we're consistent across.
Julia, the, the, the most in-depth conversation, at least in the three years I've been with you is was around a, a proposed trip to Vietnam and the, the primary, quite the the real heart of the heart question was The real heart of the heart question was. If this trip is essentially, is this a class trip? It it was, it 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 seemed to have the feel of a trip that was deeply embedded. Within a very specific curriculum and that if. Some students had the opportunity to go and experience that firsthand, it could make a real difference in um. In in that very specific class. In terms of learning experience, perhaps even in terms of grading, if if the individual teacher wasn't super careful about that. And so the the m- my recollection is that really the heart of that conversation was. Curricular, because every trip should touch on the curriculum somewhere and should touch on the learning standards as identified by the state. But some trips clearly weigh more heavily toward. Co-curricular and value-added versus you're going to be at a deficit in the class if you do not take this trip. Um.
That, thank you. There were, uh, there was also a Spain trip, I believe, or a Spanish trip that we had discussed that had a similar level of concern. Um, that it was about I inequity for class experience. Um. Thank you.
And I'm not sure if I should jump in, but we. We will not, like, if a, if students don't attend this, they're not going to be missing. You know, anything in turn, well, in terms of like, th- they're not going to be behind um in our ensembles or anything like that. Um, if they are unable to go, it's again, it's during April vacation, so it's not like. The the band is going to be gone and you're going to be um still staying in the trumpet section. Um, but it's. You, we, we will make sure that, um, you know, all students, uh, that that there's nobody, um. You know, at a deficit because they did not attend. By no means will there be anything like that.
Thank you. Thank you for that question, Julia. Uh, Ursula, oh, there you are. Ursula was up next, and I was gonna say to Jackie and Patrick that Ursula, being a. Parent of a sixth grader knows all about fundraising and you.
Yes.
Tap into her her knowledge base at some.
Yes, that was good. Um, and I answered my own question by looking at the paperwork. I was just curious, the grade levels involved, and I see that it's nine to twelve, so. Sorry. Could have read that before.
Does anyone else have questions?
Do you want a motion?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Um, I will move to approve the uh trip as presented.
Carrie moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ursula beat me to it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Oh, and I.
Henry, I.
Anstine, I.
Elfin, by an I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Thank you. That motion passes. Thank you. Thank you for your time and presentation.
Thank you, guys. Take care.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next up on the agenda, we have director reports and um. Jake, oh, it's Joelle. Joelle Bruckner will be presenting.
I am here. I think, oh, I need to uh share my screen, please.
You've got it.
There we go.
Okay.
Hello to everyone. I have been asked to come and kind of give you an update on. Our investigating history pilot that we've been um taking part in this year. And I'm starting with a little bit of a recap. Um, what is investigating history? It's an open source social studies curriculum. That currently is um being developed for grades five through seven. It is fully aligned with the Massachusetts State Frameworks from twenty eighteen. Those are the most recent. Um, in twenty twenty-one, that school year, we had the sixth grade from Williamstown Elementary. And our one seventh grade teacher participate. Um, and then. The sixth grade teachers loved it so much that they really talked it up with the fifth grade teachers. And we talked with Lanesboro, and so this year. We have all of the fifth and sixth grade teachers from both elementary schools participating. I wrote a competitive grant to make that happen. We received. Just shy of twenty-six thousand dollars, which paid for travel for our group. Um, I'll go to here. One of the things that we are required to do for the grant is to participate in two-day in-person. Um, unit-specific launch, um, professional development days. And they're always, we're the furthest away, which is also why we have the biggest grant, but um, we um, travel and stay in a hotel and have. The the PD has been one of the most valuable pieces of this entire experience, honestly. Um, the teach, we've also been obligated to teach the um units as designated during certain pilot windows and. I'll show you uh those topics coming up in a moment. And the Department of Ed does a lot in terms of support. There are office hours pretty much weekly. Um. I had written an additional grant to allow some outside-of-school hour collaboration. For our teachers across schools and across grade levels, so that's been happening. Um, teachers, for their part, in addition to teaching the units, are required to provide regular feedback. On lessons, including any adaptations or differentiation that they do. Um, and this last piece is new for us this year. We've been engaging with Circle, which is um an independent third-party. Research organization that is based at Tufts. And so, once for every one of our four units, one or two of their um researchers comes out and we. I've been going with them. It's great. We do classroom observations for whatever lesson teachers are on. And um, there are also assessments that are feedback kind of assessments. That teachers give to students for each of the units, for people who are chosen to take part in this um evaluation. Um. You have this in your packet, so you can read more. I don't want to read the slides. A lot of words here. But it's been a really interesting experience and for me to be able to talk to the researchers, um, they. They take the feedback of the teachers. They have to give additional feedback through this process. And they really, really listen to the feedback of the students and the teachers and then make adaptations to the curriculum as they go. Um, this year, fifth grade, so this has been a developing process. We came in on year two, I think. So it's it's been three years of um developing the units. And this year, these are the units that were taught in grades five and six. We are on the Civil War and Civil Rights in fifth grade right now and talking about. Um, ancient cultures in the Americas in sixth grade. There is a really robust website that I encourage anyone who's interested. To go to and look at. It's linked here, but you can also just Google investigating history, Massachusetts, and. You will get a plethora of information. Um, if you go to this page, I really like these. This is new this year, and I really like these um unit inquiry maps. They're public-facing for the first time. And you, if you go there, you can see the learning progressions for every unit, including the, which. The Department of Ed is calling enduring understandings. I mean, the, for people who are familiar with state frameworks, there are so many standards. And um, the enduring understandings are really the core themes that we hope. That students will take away as they move on through um school. One of the things that we've appreciated very much about this and and. There's a, there's a certain level of pride that we have felt. When we've gotten together for the professional development um situations, that we just feel fortunate that we're in Massachusetts. Um, that is supporting, really trying to um teach true history. And um, there's a fantastic statement. There's an FAQ also on the website. On, uh, I think it's called, uh, actually, I wrote it down, Race, Racism and Culturally Responsive Teaching in History and Social Studies in Massachusetts. Um, I encourage people to read it. It's a a great resource. Um, so this is where we are now. We have. Next year, this curriculum is going to go live for every school in the state. It's going to stay open source. Um, so it, there will be a level of it that is free on the web, but they're also publishing some. Some of the materials, so that we'll be able to buy teachers' guides and things like that. Right now, things are all housed in Google Drive for the most part, so. To make it more available for all schools, um, there'll be paper copies. Um, and there's a new grant, which I submitted today, and. Our grant is going to be for buying all the teacher mi- and student materials that we need. Um, funding for collaborative planning outside of school hours again. And this year, in conversation with our seventh grade history teacher, um, we Hancock has not participated in this program. And they haven't been able to because they weren't part of the pilot, but when this. Opportunity for next year came open, I contacted Jay Merseles. And sent it his way, and so he's applied, which we're really excited about because. It's important to us that all of our students coming into Mount Greylock have a similar experience um curricularly. So this will be the first time that I know of anyhow that the elementary schools, if they get the grant, um, will be working together. Um, I've written into the grant a little bit of funding to have some district teachers serve as mentors, so that the. Teacher in Hancock has like boots-on-the-ground kind of support. We're really excited about that. Um, mostly what I want to do is just. Give heaps and heaps of appreciation to our teachers who have really done so much work. Um, they have enthusiastically embraced the pilot. They are so excited. So our fifth grade teachers, Jen Downey. Franny Micali, uh, Kate Side, Gina Wagner, Molly Whaley, and sixth grade teachers, Ken Albin, Rob Bradley, Kathleen Igo. Tricia Kowalczuk, Katrina Mafukio and Sarah Stricker. They have been amazing. And our six, it's been really. Interesting and fun to watch for me at the PD sessions. Our sixth grade was involved in the pilot last year, as I've always already said, and there are many schools who are new this year into the program, and so. It's been amazing to see our district teachers kind of step up in those situations, and they're being called on as experts. Um, to help support colleagues from across the state, and it's just a great opportunity and also is wonderful for me personally to watch. Next steps for investigating history is designing curricula for third and fourth grades, which. Our third and fourth grade teachers are already really excited about. Um, there is going to be. Kind of a soft rollout in the fall. Where they're writing the curriculum, and so there's, I think there's only probably fifteen. Teachers involved, and we, our district is not. It's not been opened up to everybody, and I'm hoping that in the spring. Will be able to have the option to join a pilot for third and fourth grade. Um. I should add that one of the things that, you know, as putting this together, I think one of the major takeaways for me. Is that not only have we had this amazing experience that we've been able to give to our students. It's really allowed us to elevate the importance of teaching social studies in elementary school, which. Sometimes gets lost in the in the shuffle of focusing so much attention on reading and math. Um, sometimes social studies goes by the wayside, and this really had, part of what we had to do is commit. To t- having a certain number of minutes a week and certain number of class periods at um a week, and it's really. It's really infused a lot of energy and interest. Um, the lessons are super high engagement and it's been great. So, and I just thought I would, I know no one from Desi is watching, but I just wanted to say thank you because truly it's been a wonderful experience. And I will keep you updated um. About what happens next. We get preference for the grant for next year since we have been part of the pilot, so I'm feeling pretty optimistic.
Thank you, Gemma.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Uh, Julia.
I, I am so excited, Joelle. I think that's amazing work, and I'm thinking about. Um, you you raised this, the history and social studies standards being elevated in the elementary school. I'm also thinking about just those opportunities for our teachers to collaborate, not just with each other, but across the state and the. Wonderful benefit that that brings our district. Um, so I I have gratitude for you for leading this charge for that as well. And I'm wondering if you could share, I I can also imagine, and I'm wondering if you can share any thoughts on this. Um, that while this professional development and curricular work was around social studies and history. I would imagine it undoubtedly also supports just teacher development more broadly for other. Subjects, and I'm wondering if you had any kind of color commentary on that. Um, I I love this investing in the teachers right now. Like, I I think it's great. Yep.
Um, I definitely think that there is, I mean, I I kind of mentioned, there's just. There's. Been a heightened excitement around talking about teaching and learning. And that I definitely see that translate. Um, it, the work that we're doing in social studies is. Helping us ask really good questions about what we're teaching and how we're teaching in other subjects. Especially in the area of um DEIB. And so, you know, some out, I am sure I will be back in coming months to talk more about that. Tonight was really focused on social studies. But it's helping us think about, okay, so this is how we are teaching. The Civil War. So what, let's look at those books that we're teaching in English to make sure that we are. Giving the same messages that we are saying, get, you know, that we're teaching correctly and we're, and that we are not whitewashing. And we're, you know, doing what we need to be doing. So there's definitely been carryover.
Thank you. Great question, Julia. Carrie.
Um, Joelle, I, this may have been, I'm also, um, of course, very supportive of this and and thank you for for. For doing all the work needed to to bring this to my, to the district. Um, do we know who has been involved in creating this curriculum by any chance?
Yes. Do I know them? Do I remember it all? No, but it's been the Department of Ed. It's been um people from Boston College. Um, School of Education and people from Tufts and truly the teachers. So. It, one of the thing, I think, one of the reasons that we had such amazing buy-in for the second year was because our sixth grade teachers were able to see. That the comments that they made actually were taken into account. Um, and we actually are very proud of the fact that we've helped develop this curriculum for everyone. I really hope that the Department of Ed uses this as a model for other content areas. Because it's been, from our point of view, really successful. It's both, it's both, you know, taking experts from universities, but then taking. Teachers who are experts every single day with children in the classroom and bringing everyone together. Um, next year. For the first time, the, so we're not going to do any more of the professional development through the state. And Department of Ed is no longer going to host it, so they, they're going to be PD providers. Um, but they've been very carefully selected. This is, this whole process has been so intentional from Desi. Um, I really, really do hope that it continues in other areas, because we'll, we'll join.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Joelle? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Uh, hear about that. Okay, next up on the agenda, superintendent report.
Thank you, Christina, and I'm very grateful to Joelle for, not only for her work, um. That she's undertaken to lead this, this really exciting and important social studies pilot. Um, but been thankful for her presenting tonight, uh, and in the context of what's going to come next. Uh, we're, we're very fortunate to to practice uh our art and our science of of educating. In the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that understands that really one of the primary anti-racist tools. That that school districts, that classrooms, schools, school districts and the state itself have at at its disposal. Is to teach the truth as things actually happened and as things. Uh, actually transpired and what the impacts on human beings were uh in history. From not in an effort to villainize anybody, but in an effort to provide students the truth. From not in an effort to villainize anybody, but in an effort to provide students the true context of, of who they are, who their neighbors are, and, and, and who and what our country is so that we can be better positioned to move forward into a brighter future for everybody. So thank you, Joelle. Thank you to Desi for, for understanding this and working toward this end. We do understand that there is great disappointment and maybe even anger and upset and disbelief that we're not feeling like we're able to move forward with a DEIB director. But that doesn't mean, as is evidenced by what we just discussed and what I'm asking Joe tonight to discuss further when I hand off to him in a minute. That doesn't mean the work hasn't been ongoing here, the work of, of increasing belonging. And it doesn't mean that it's not going to continue to happen. And there are certainly people in the community who will make sure of that. And, and will be helpful in making that work happen. The absence of a director does not mean at all that, that this work isn't ongoing. It simply gives us in some ways the opportunity to have a much better set of systems and be better positioned for when we do ultimately have a director. That they will be coming into a team of people who can do this work and who are better trained in this work and ready to partner with that director in this work. So that our expectations of this position and this person can actually be met. And they're not unrealistic and we're not expecting efforts of, of heroic and unhuman expectations of, of who and what this person is and, and what they're able to do. So thank you, Joelle. Thank you all for your questions and comments about that work. Serves as a nice foundation for the presentation that Joe's going to do next, which really lays out the areas that we have been working, will continue to work and how. And very grateful to Joe for, for stepping up and asking if he could do this. And with that, Joe, thank you. And the floor is yours.
Thank you. So as Jake alluded to, what I'm going to try to do tonight is to provide a survey of, of the work that we view as, as reasonable to try to tackle in the coming year. It's a broad survey of, of all of it. And in the coming months, I, I hope and I, I promise that we will be able to get into much more detail within a number of these segments as well as see results, as well as see what we're able to do. So first up, how will approach their work? The most important thing to start off with is that we need to work hard to avoid paralysis. That's both because we might overanalyze and try to figure out the perfect thing to do, but also because we're afraid of doing the wrong thing. And I think that has challenged, it certainly challenged me in my personal life. I think it's challenged us as an institution. And it's something that, that we need to keep in front of us in, in every way and at every corner so that, so that we don't fall into that trap. We need to enable the team that we have in place to do these things. First up, teachers and paraprofessionals, you know, they, they are the folks who have the most contact time, the most, the largest number of opportunities to, to affect change within our community. Giving them the tools, giving them the support and making sure that we create the right structures to, to be able to see, see our work succeed is critical there. Within each building, we have social workers, guidance counselors, multiple language learner, teachers, school psychologists and principals. Those teams within each building are that next layer of contact with students that organize, that have direct time with, with students and, and who really are in the best position to respond as well as to create change on a, on a daily basis. And we need to, we need to facilitate what they do in a way that's very intentional. Up at the district cross schools level, we have our directors of curriculum, academic technology. And technology, we have our HR administrator, business administrator, me, and, and Jake and the superintendent. So that's the team that, that we're putting in front of you. And that will be used to approach a lot of what you see on the screen tonight. It's a three hundred and sixty degree threaded through everything need kind of topic. You know, that there is no way to say there is one project, one area that can, that can affect the kind of change that I think we all need and want. The, the tip there, when things go wrong, how do we respond to incidents? Now, that's something that I think we, we have discussed in the past. We have some good things that we've done, especially in recent weeks. And that we, we have a lot of work ahead of us in the coming year. And I'd like to talk about that in a second. Building a community that is stronger together. The need for community to create resilience, to create understanding, to create an environment where things don't go wrong as often and where we can respond to them as a team when they do, incredibly important. Developing our skills in leading conversations and participating in events. Or simply participating in conversations and participating in, in, in events. Another area that I want to touch on. What we bring to our classrooms and libraries, the content that we push in, the way that we present content, the way that we facilitate conversations around that content. How we communicate with our community, the tools that we use, the standards that we use, the expectations that we have. Refining our handbooks, policies and procedures. You know, the, the, these are the underpinnings upon which everything else ends up being built. And improving how we hire and retain staff. And that that's another foundation of, of what, that creates what is possible within, within this world. So taking the first one, incident response improvement. For a long period of time, we had a, a PDF sheet of paper that would be a form for being able to submit a bias-based incident, details around that incident. As of the last few weeks, we have an online recording form that, that has been launched and that will be improved over time now. There are website revisions that are in progress right now to make sure that it and other important side elements are both primary, easily found, as well as consistently available across schools. Since our merger as three school districts five years ago, we have made a number of changes within our online and, and technology worlds. But a big push right now with the team, as we pull out of the pandemic, is to actually make some of the foundational changes with technology across our three schools that will allow them to become unified, easier to work with, and more, and more functional. We will be adding mobile and other capabilities around incident reporting soon. And that's, those are projects that are in progress right now. For reference tonight, as I try to move through this swiftly to allow for plenty of questions, but also try to not drop too many balls. Text that's on the screen right now that is in black, that stuff that, that is already done. The lighter gray, things that are in progress, things that we'll be working through either for the rest of this school year and, and in through next year. Just as a, as a little key for, for how information is being presented. Second part of incident response, what happens once a forum is submitted? What happens once data is provided? Currently, the data goes to the superintendent and the relevant building principal. And then team is used to address the incident with advisors, both outside and inside, inside our schools. We will be further formalizing the district and building level teams and the way we manage and, and work with, analyze and, and retain that data. We're going to refine consistent and production, productive responses to incidents. Part of that is looking at how we can invest in restorative justice training, which is a, it's a massive topic, wonderful field. It's also an area where in order for us to effectively institute restorative justice practices across our buildings, we really need to look at it as a, as a full school community from the top down and bottom up approach. We are reaching out to restorative justice education, Suffolk University to, to groups that have a lot of experience and a lot of offerings in terms of being able to work both K through twelve, as well as across entire institutions as opposed to simply with, with pointed people or individuals within an institution. So those are areas that we're looking into right now. All of this moving us in a direction to being able to respond better to incidents when they do happen as a community, as schools and as a school district. So now building a stronger community, moving away from what happens when something goes wrong into how to, how to prevent those things from happening. For a couple of decades now, many institutions have shied away from celebrating just about anything within their school buildings. And I think that, that is not the message that, that places should have taken the, the actions that, that they should have taken when they realized that, that one thing, one thing that perhaps a former majority or a current majority celebrates should be there and nothing else. Really, the message that we should take home, that we should live out is that we should increase our visible celebrations of identity, of culture, of religion. And, and in order for us to do that, it requires embracing those instincts that already exist within, within all of us, but getting out of the way of, of making sure that happens. So we need to discover and organize information and opportunities within these areas, which means collecting information from our families, from our staff, things that they celebrate, things that they do that we can bring into our school buildings and do that very intentionally. We need to ensure that the policies and procedures that we have in place don't get in the way of that. You know, we, for many years, we've had plenty of the policies and procedures that avoid food, that avoid many, many extracurricular activities in and around our school buildings, both, both during and right after school. We need to create space within our calendars and our schedules so that all of this can happen. We need to enable our non administrators and our non teachers within the community to pick up those torches and run with them and be able to, to live these things out. So that it's not on a single person or, or a small group of people within the school building. All with the end goal of increasing the visible celebration, celebrations of identity and diversity within our buildings. Going to this idea that communities that play together and that know each other are more resilient, more communicative, more compassionate, more productive. So it needs to be a core part of, of how we go about our lives around our school buildings. And pulling out of COVID, I think this is especially poignant because for a few years there, even with communities that, that did exist, that were celebratory within, within their worlds, were oftentimes much more isolated and, and, and found that more difficult. And so bringing intentionality here, really focusing on what we can do and how we can facilitate more, needs to be a goal as we move into this coming year. There are numerous examples of this happening this year within our school buildings. And I'm incredibly proud of the, of the principals and the teachers who have really brought a lot of this to life. But, but i- it's an area where we need to facilitate as a district more and more. Comfort in conversations and events. If, if I learned one thing coming out of the PD that we invested in over the last couple of years, the conversations and the surveys that we've had with teachers and with paraprofessionals, it's that there are so many words and conversations and types of events that happen in hallways, that happen after school, that happen before school, that happen during classroom conversations that paralyze them, that, that make them feel uncomfortable and unable to effectively participate in, much less lead or, or lead, much less participate in as, as days go on. And that those real life situations are the areas where our staff need the most professional development, that we all honestly need the most development, whether it's professional or not. And, and so to do that, the steps that we're proposing taking, we're going to collect data. We're, we're going to try to make sure that we develop that large suitcase full of, here are all of the things that happened, here are the words that are said, here are the conversations that are started, that I don't feel comfortable somehow helping, that, that I don't feel comfortable leading. We need to, to, to develop that cache of information so that we can then find experts who can provide developmentally appropriate responses, ways to approach conversations, ways to approach words that, that can be helpful. Because that's empowered, that's empowering. And that's the kind of stuff for staff that can give them a greater comfort and sense of, of place in terms of being able to affect change and being able to help. Rather than, rather than feeling paralyzed by trying to enter into a conversation. So building a community around asking questions and facilitating dialogue, it's a big part of the professional development area that, that we need to work within in this coming year, and I think for, for many, many years to come. And then moving away from the conversations and the words and the events that happen, looking at what we deliver. Joelle talked tonight about how we're early adopters of a new five through six investigating history program, new social studies curriculum. There are many areas where the, the state's team and the staff involved in this have been able to peel back all of the layers and, and the ways that within state frameworks, within history, within the way things were always taught. The blind spots, the, the, the areas that were not approached as fully as they need to with as many tools as, as they should have. There are many ways that, that I think we're, we're pretty, pretty excited about that. It, it is only one step, but, but it's the kind of step that we need to take consistently and, and throughout all the work that we do. Whenever we're exploring new pieces of curriculum, trying to make sure that we do it with the broadest and most capable set of, of experts within the state's frameworks, within the state's requirements that we can possibly, possibly bring to there. We have a K through six literacy progression documentation effort that's been ongoing. Looking at the materials that are, that are common throughout our K through six classrooms within the world of reading and literacy that can be both documented for, for our use and understanding how to evolve those across K through six in both of our elementary schools, but also offered to our, to our families within our communities so that they can understand the content that we are using within our classrooms and, and work with us on, on constantly improving that content. And then last spring, and it will continue this spring, there is a new up, updated gender and sex identity and health program. It was piloted in the fourth grade at Williamsdale Elementary School. And that will continue this year and, and we'll be working on rolling that out more broadly and more fully in the, in the coming years. So those are just three of the, three of the things that we can point out that, that have been happening, that are happening. And as we look towards the future, we know that we need to increase our efforts in figuring out how to review curriculum on a consistent basis to identify omissions and blind spots. And it's not that we don't want to talk about topics, it's, it's that we need to continually review how we go about talking about those topics. There, there are a lot of areas within many schools' curricula that, that just that deserve individual and dedicated attention. And, and without that, we're, we're not going to create the kind of change within it that, that we know that we can. We need to encourage staff to self-identify the challenges that they face and facilitate the, the correct supports that, that they need in order to, to change the way topics are presented and, or in order to lead conversations effectively around those topics. And then when investing in new curriculum, and this is something that, that has been happening and, and will continue to happen, the committees and teams that approach evaluating The committees and teams that approach evaluating and and implementing curriculum. Will be paying special attention within the areas of DEI and B. And and what it means to to change the content that that we're bringing into our our classrooms. All of this wrapped around trying to ensure that the creators of the content and the content itself represents the identities, cultures and religions. That we have within our school district, within our region, within our nation, within the world more fully. And that's always always the goal. So now what we offer in our libraries, and this is from the American Association of of Librarians. A diverse collection should contain content by and about a wide array of people and cultures to authentically reflect a variety of ideas, information, stories and experiences. Our staff. Within our libraries, within our school buildings. Are personally very invested in trying to make sure that that we are constantly expanding the content. As well as identifying areas where we need to bootstrap. And work on the way that we handle challenging content. Primarily the areas that that we within the district office and and the school committee level can work there is consistently evaluating. The policies and and the procedures that we have around accession and deaccession. And making sure that we supply the the needed funding to be able to accelerate additions to our libraries as as needed. And that's something that I think you'll you'll be seeing more from us over the next. Six to nine months in terms of areas where we'd like to place increased emphasis. And how we can go about that. And then with the content that we have in our libraries. Where that content is is challenging, we do need to provide the bootstraps, the the tools that people need in order to be able to approach that content. In a way that's that's productive. And in a way that that allows our students to 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 live through that, learn through that most fully. Now our communication practices. We need to communicate in preferred languages. It's an area where you you can see here that that I've got. Some words that are that are half dark, some that are half light and and the fact is that. Despite the fact that I. In sending emails regularly to families across the district, especially during COVID. I tried to be pretty consistent about making sure that there were translations in in every communication that I sent. I made mistakes. I would I would receive last minute content when the state was changing something up. And I would scramble to get an email. I tried to make sure I didn't have any to have too many typos in it. I needed to get it out before parents would be picking people up. So that they would know what they needed to know. And I would click send and about 10 seconds later I would say, wait. Where was the translation? I I thought I had just done it. What did I do? And that's for somebody who's sitting here tonight saying that that this is a that this is a mandate and that this is something that that we're paying close attention to. So the end result is one, I I need to get better, but two, we need tools that make it so that translation, so that communicating in preferred languages happens. Automatically so that so that it happens in a way so that every communication that goes out. Carries that and that preferably preferably so that every communication that comes to us is able to be translated from whatever somebody's preferred language. Is. Into whatever our preferred language is. And and so that's something that that the district wide team has been paying attention to, and I and I think we're going to make some progress here over the next. Month or two as we as we move into the summer. We need to communicate in ways that increase awareness and engage and engagement. This doesn't mean sending more emails. Or sending more text messages or making more robocalls, but it means that we need ways to put content. Put requests. Put updates in front of families so that it's easier for them to digest that information so that it's easier for us to invite them into the fold so that we can do more as a community. And that's something where again, we're we're looking at tools, we're looking at transitions that we can make. To to try to take those steps to make it so that so that we can do a better job there. And like I was saying with preferred languages, we we need to then do all of that consistently. We we need to come up with the ways to to make sure that that communication is. Consistently thoughtful and and productive. As I had touched upon within bias incident reporting. We are working on improving our websites, ease of use, navigation. Translations. We we need to use fewer images that have embedded text. We need to make sure that every document that gets posted. Is either automatically translated or or is very intentionally translated so that so that we're not leaving. Holes and gaps and ways that that equity and accessibility are are left behind in the name of just trying to get something up. All of this is the end goal of strengthening communication and and through that strengthening community. The the equity hurdles that exist. When we have tools that people cannot access easily and that and that people cannot. Use consistently are are pretty serious and and so these are areas that we know that we need to make improvements so that we've got a better basis upon which to to do the work. That all of our staff do on a daily basis. Then policies and procedures. The school district policy set review, you know, that's always ongoing with the policy subcommittee. I I think there are ways that that we might be able to pull out groups of policies here over the next year and try to make sure that. We give them special treatment that that we don't simply. Look for areas where we have discomfort in the moment. But instead that are perhaps more foundation, more foundationally creating structural issues. Within within the ways that we then develop procedures on top of the policies. And that's something that I think Jake and I will be bringing forward to you. On a on a pretty good clip here over the next year. We're going to have an expanded team approach to our student and family handbook revisions. We have a student family handbook in each of our three buildings. Traditionally and and legally, that is a principal and school council. Makes revisions and then brings that to the school committee. This is an area where we're we're going to take a team approach to it this summer and and make sure that we're really taking a look at it with with a number of different lenses and trying to make sure that where we can take. Deeper change and recommendations into into mind that we're going to be doing that. Same thing with the staff handbook. The staff handbook is is something that all new staff receive and that is refreshed annually. For for current staff prior to the start of the school year. There are numerous areas within the staff handbook that we think that we can take a a better crack at at creating a better environment and and expectations. For all. So that's another area that we will be, we will be. That we will be tackling. And then we need to make sure that change is more fluid. We we have, we have. Legal requirements, we have. Regulatory and kind of consistent standards around around how we do things. But I think oftentimes within municipalities changes slow. Partly because of that. But also partly because we're we're just not not accustomed to changing as quickly. And this is a part of the part of the world, part of the way that we need to work. Where we need to become more comfortable with with making changes as as quickly as we can in in ways that are needed. And then on a separate note. Improving our ability to schedule events and develop calendars that are sensitive to cultural and religious needs. Within our efforts to develop school calendars annually. We have taken a very intentional approach, especially over the last year or two. About. To make sure that we reach out to religious and cultural leaders within our communities and say, can you take a look at this? Can you can you give us some some thoughts as to? As to issues that we might have dates that we might need to change situations that we are creating within these calendars. That's something that's very intentional. But many of our staff who are trying to figure out when to plan an event, how to set a calendar, they don't have the same. Weight and time and and structures in place that that we might hear within the district office. And so making sure that we facilitate. The ability for. Staff. To set events, to set calendars in ways that 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 can avoid some of those pitfalls or as many of those pitfalls as we can. Really important. And I and I have here on the slide, something that Williams College publishes every year. Now where they they actually publish a a calendar of dates. Along with recommended accommodations. So you can see here for Rosh Hashanah. The way the college describes for all of its staff. Here's something to consider. Prior to scheduling an event. On either of these first two days of Rosh Hashanah. And and that's the. Kind of thing that we need to figure out how to how to do and make easy for our staff so that as they do the important work that they do. That we facilitate them being able to do that in a way that's more sensitive and and. And respectful. Then hiring and retention, our staff are not as diverse as our student body, our region. Or the or the country. The teaching and paraprofessional professions in Massachusetts are are suffering in the same way. Jake had gone through a presentation a few months ago that that really highlighted that in in so many ways. Rather than feeling defeated by that at all. We we are looking at at the full cycle work that we do when hiring. The jobs and the job descriptions themselves, the job postings, the the content that we that we put into those postings, where we post. How we interview, the the interview questions, the the teams that are a part of interviews and how that. How that presents to candidates. How our staff advocate to peers for for them to come and work here. Those are all areas where where we can and are. Creating positive change. To try to do what we can within the parameters that that we have. The differentiate, the the differentiators that that we can create, I think, to be appealing. We we have a number that that we need to approach and. And we're taking steps there here over the over the next year and and we'll be able to talk about those and celebrate those hopefully. More fully in the come in the coming months. And then the degree to which we can help people navigate the state and federal requirements, that the licensure requirements. In Massachusetts are are. Are wonderful, but at the same time, they certainly create some barriers to people being able to move into. The state and pretty quickly gain the licensure necessary to to be an educator. And that's an area where where we can help. And we can facilitate making that. Easier and more approachable, understandable. For for potential staff. And I, something that that we within our. Our halls sometimes comes, we sometimes come back to. Is if we start off as not diverse. Bootstrapping that catalyzing it, maintaining it is difficult. It it's a common challenge that that other. Large employers within our area. Have have grappled with for for many years now. And it's something that I think we can become a larger part of helping to solve. By being very intentional about about joining hands and and trying to figure out ways to. As employers, create the best environment that we can to make it so that our staff do reflect our student body. They do reflect our region and and our country. And that's something that that we're going to be working hard towards. We already are, but we will hopefully have made a bigger dent in it here over the next year. Now, next steps. The who, what and when, I know that everybody wants. A list of projects, a list of milestones, deadlines and individuals who are responsible. Part of why I am doing this survey tonight. Is so that in the coming months. Individual projects, individual efforts. Can be highlighted both here within the school committee level, but but also at the appropriate appropriate moments within our community. This topic, when it is presented as DEIB goals. Is an area that. Is very challenging to address in a way that makes. The staff and the communities that are trying to do the work feel comfortable. I I think they oftentimes feel like either nothing would be good enough. Or that they're going to make a mistake and they're going to get called out for it. Or that they are. Simply. Not feeling up for it. And 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 so this is something where I feel as though. Putting me out there, putting Jake out there and having us come back to you in the coming months and be able to talk about successes, hopefully. And be able to talk about individual projects and the people who are working on them will will be wonderful. Trying to keep that away from having it feel like the mountain that is in front. Is something that to me is is critical to to us being able to be productive. So that's something where I think that when people say, well, can I just get a list of everybody who's working on things and exactly what they're going to do? I I I don't think that will be the most productive way for our community to to do this work. And so I'm just being upfront about that. With with you and and with myself. In terms of measuring success, you know, the basic metrics. Incident reporting, number of incidents. You know, within those areas where the when things go wrong type world, I fully expect those to go up. Before they go down because we are going to try to increase. The the ease with which. And the degree to which incident reporting can and should happen. So I'm I'm thinking that that we we might see a. A spike and then hopefully we'll be able to start to with more data, with more reporting, with more communication, be able to then then navigate that. Our panorama surveys will elucidate in some areas. But not all. And and so as we as we move through the next few cycles of panorama surveys, I think it'll be interesting to. To see the types of change that that we will see. In terms of individual projects, we're certainly going to bring forward here. Here's something that we did and here's the effect. And I think that we can try to try to keep a log of that and understand all of the positives and the negatives that come. But the most important changes will be generational. We 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 do need to look at this as something where the student body that we have right now, the families that we have right now, the staff that we have right now. It it'll be a gradual sea of change that that is happening. And it's important to measure, it's important to find the milestones, but we also need to be able to to view it up from a from a high enough level to understand how that sea is changing. And lastly, I'll I'll lead with, and I'm sure I have numerous times already tonight, but we will stumble. But it is, this is an area. That is threaded throughout everything that we do and that the team that we have within our school buildings and within our district office is incredibly. Committed to and and so respectfully, I'm I'm looking forward to and excited about the the prospects that we have for this coming year. And we're going to do the best that we can with them. So thank you for your time. Certainly open it up to to plenty of questions now. We can we can backtrack to places. However, you'd like to approach it.
Thank you, Joe. Um, I'm fine if the committee wants to raise their hand and ask. Joe questions directly, you're more than welcome to. I don't have to be in the middle.
Are you saying we just jump in or are you saying Joe calls on us?
Just jump in or Joe calls on you. If it gets ugly, I'll I'll. I'll mediate.
But I hopefully I won't get ugly. First, I want to say. A deep and tremendous thank you for. I I feel like what you did with that presentation is name a lot of areas that I hear people talking about. And name. Progress that's already started as well as a plethora of places where you you and I say you collectively. Understand work still needs to happen. I wanted to. I. Offer a couple thoughts and then ask an important question in my mind. I really appreciate that you, I think you should have led with, we will stumble. I think that. This is hard work and it's the work that. I is in my mind, the most important work we should be doing right now. But that fear that you described. May cause us to stumble, the analysis, like all of these things are are make this work even harder and we just need to give ourselves grace as we move through this work. So I I need to say that. I also, I'm interested in this idea. Of DEIB goals is like a hard thing for people to wrap their heads around because. It can feel, I I I if I put, if I understand what you are saying. It can feel like we are failures. Um, it can feel like we are failures if we don't meet those goals. I, I'm not sure if that's exactly how you were, what you meant to convey. Um, and I just want to say sometimes the goal is never met. Um, and it's the, the fact that we're moving towards the goal that is the important thing. And then finally, this is now leading to my question. There's so much that you described that needs to be done. And you talked about a year. And that's not all going to happen in a year. And, um, and I haven't heard or, or I think we as a school committee need to have a discussion about what we're going to try to take off the plate. In terms of, um, goals that Jake does have. No, I needed to mute that person, not you guys.
Hold on.
I was the one talking. Um, I feel like we need to have an honest discussion with the school committee around what we, what we need to do to relieve you of maybe some of the other goals that we had already named. Um, because already this is more than can be accomplished in a year. Thank you.
So just to, to speak to that, um, certainly not all of this will be done. I, I would actually be surprised if, if any of it is, is ever a hundred percent complete and put away, done. It is all continual work. I, I can't think of a single slide that I had up that we can just say we, we've achieved the goal and, and now we're moving on to another project. But in terms of meaningful change within each of those slides. Each of those topics within, within my world is a fairly detailed outline with, with people and with many projects. It's not something that, that I think is, is healthy to, to put out. But at the same time, it is something where I feel like on each of those slides that I just presented. I do feel like as we move out of F Y twenty four. We will be able to say here's what we did and here's what we accomplished as a team. And, and that, that will need to be that will need to be the way that we approach it. In terms of taking other things off of plates, um, I I love that idea. Um, I don't know how practical it is given given the things that, that, that are on our plates right now. But I, one of the great comforts that I take in everything that I put up on that screen just now is that there isn't a single thing that's contingent upon one person. Every single area there has, has a team and, and has a, a group that um, needs to be enabled. And, and I understand that that sounds like then the enabling and the facilitating is, is falling on, on too small of a group. But like you said, this work is important enough that it needs to rise to the top. And, and we need to come up with ways to approach it. And, and I think the reason that when we, when we nowadays, when we say D E I N B, D E I B, um, that it can make people shy away from it. Is because it is so personal and it is something where if you do fail, you have failed an individual and a group of people that you care about. And that nothing is enough. You know, you, you, you're never going to get fully done. You're never going to make things fully better. But the things that we can celebrate as a school district and as teams of people will be being able to look and know, one, that we worked hard at it. Two, that we created positive change. And three, that the individuals that we care about are better off as a result. Um, so you know, those are metrics that, that I think people can feel and that teams can feel. Um, it's a little bit more difficult to put that up into a grid to show you know, that we, we have a ninety seven percent score within this area. Um, but I do feel as though we, we, we can do that. A, as a group to be able to know what we've done and know who we positively impacted and know why that was. Um, so that's, that's where I would hope we, we take each bit of content, um, over the next twelve months.
Go ahead, Jose.
Sorry, thank you. Um, no, and thank you, Joe, for that. And you know, just, just echoing, uh, Julia here, you know, it's clear. The careful thinking that went into what you just presented us. And I think what how I heard it was, was, you know, everything that you, you said and spoke was you spoke with sincerity. Also ech- echoing Julia, you know, the, um, the goals that as you've articulated for our community, our district. Um, are aspirational. And, um, lofty, maybe one might say. And, and certainly incredibly difficult as, as just as, as, as Julia said, and then, and I know we can't go backwards. But it does seem to speak to this incredible need to have someone who is a professional in this area to be able to accomplish this work. And there's this worry that by distributing this incredible, you know, and, and lofty workload onto our staff and administrators. It, it very much likely, it's, I think the worry would be that, that it would make it, you know, less likely that we'll actually be, actually be a successful in, in achieving these goals. And that, that's I think a real worry for me, um, and I'm sure for many, many members of our community. That said, moving forward, the issue, and it's been an outstanding issue of this need to diversify our, our staff. The research has shown by having a diversified, you know, staff or, 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 you know, uh, cohort of teachers in front of our students can do so much. Not just for our students of color, but for our white identifying students, you know, in terms of helping them see the world and understand the world differently. And, and see, see each other and the people in this world differently. It's been a goal of ours to, to do this, to do this work. And what I'm curious about is, you know, what you, you, you know, thinking about you, like Joe and Jake. Um, what do you think is going to, what, what are we going to do differently? To be more successful in this area. Um, and, and acknowledging how incredibly difficult it is. And, and I know this, you know, firsthand, uh, how, how difficult it is to, to bring people into, into this area, uh, to live.
Yeah. And, and what you ended with, I, I think is in many ways, the single greatest challenge that we have, the, the, the difficulty that employers have in in creating diversity within their staff in Berkshire County, in Williamstown, in Lansborough. Um, but in terms of concrete things that, that we're doing right now. We are taking a team approach to how we develop job postings. And we are making sure that ju- those job postings become as detailed and as inviting in, a, a, as we can in terms of if, if we're posting for a visual art teacher. For instance. The tradition would be you put up a job posting to say that you need a visual art teacher who, um, has licensure and who's excited to work with students in grade seven through twelve. Um, a, a much better approach would be to talk about the, the breadth of experiences, the depth of experiences and the kinds of things that, that you would like to be able to offer your students. So that somebody who has a background that reads that job posting can say these are folks who I want to work with. These are folks who are going to value the, the different types of things that I will bring to the table beyond what comes in a standard job posting. So that's part one. And doing that with all of our job postings is something that we can do. And we need to do. So that's one thing that hopefully I'll be able to look back on at the end of this year, and I'll be able to say every job posting, I took the time to take this lens and, and to take this filter and to reach out to friends that, that I know this world better than I do. To ask them for advice and to ask them for input. That's part one. And where do we put that job posting? Um, most school districts within Massachusetts use, um, a pair of job posting services that tie directly back into our personnel, uh, information management systems. Um, that make it so that it's really convenient for us to know exactly what, um, where somebody is coming from, what their licensure is, how we can, how we can hire them. Um, branching out beyond that takes more effort, um, doing it so that we get our job postings more conveniently, more regularly in front of people in New York City, people in, um, teaching universities in other parts of the country that, that might have more diverse student bodies and backgrounds than, than within our area. You know, that's part two, and that's an area where, where we are changing, um, the kind of coverage that we get within our job postings. And that hopefully will, will make a difference. Um, you know, but, but that's the difference right there. Three, within the interview questions. Um, we have been and we will continue to work hard to try to make sure that interview questions reveal um, the things that we value, the ways that people would be excited to work with us. Um, if they choose us over a competing school district. You know, that in and of itself helps once somebody has bought or to put in their application and get to the interview process. And then for, um, building community within the diversity that we already have around helping to recruit, helping to get the word out, helping to make sure that people want to come work with us. Those are all achievable things here over the next twelve months. Um, and they are all things that the staff that we have that are doing the work of developing the job postings, of getting them out of building the interview committees, of conducting the interviews, they're all invested in. And, and will it be perfect? No. Absolutely not. Um, would a D E I V director perhaps if they committed a day of their week, each week to only that? Would they, would they make more progress? Yes. Um, but it doesn't mean that we're not going to make progress. It doesn't mean that we're not going to be able to do it. And it does elucidate the fact that we need a team and we need structures to approach these things. It can't be one person. Um, so it needs to be a group effort and it needs to be within the structure. It makes it so this becomes a part of how we conduct our business on a, on, on, on the daily. Now, that's just one, one area, but within, so that's to give you a little sense of the types of things within that slide. I'm already looking back saying those are the things that we're doing and that we need to keep on paying attention to. Um, and every slide that we have, every point that I brought up has that same level of depth. And, and so I don't think it's unreasonable to say that we're going to throw ourselves at this in a way that will be productive.
Carrie.
Thanks. Um, so thank you for this, um, Joe. I'm wondering who participated in the conversations around developing this plan. I mean, was it like, uh, just a core administrative team or was it the whole, like, how, how much buy-in does this already have? It's a very real question.
That i- i- if you looked at the slide that I put up first with the, with the staff. All of the individual positions that, that were, that were called out, um, all of them have been a part of it. There are teachers across our buildings who have reached out, who have expressed very specific wants and, and needs and interests. In, in terms of who actually developed the slides, but yes, I, I synthesized the information. I put it together and, and I felt responsible for conveying it. That there was one person who could potentially try to respond to questions on the fly tonight. Um, but in terms of the buy-in that we have, there's a there's a wonderfully large team that has responsibilities in each building that, that is very much a part of this and, and it's not as though there are just a couple of us who are who are, uh,
Okay. That's what I thought, but thank you. Um, I have a couple of other questions. Um, you mentioned, um, the need to celebrate religious and cultural events in, in the community at the school. And I have a couple of questions on that. Um, one is about, um, families needing to represent, right? Um, and the work of individual families around representation and how you think about mediating that, um, so that it doesn't become uh, burdensome, burdensome to individual families. And then my other question is what are the rules, um, for public schools? Like, we all have this sense that we're not supposed to you know, celebrate religion in the public schools, but how does that apply to this work around elevating and supporting um, various cultures and religions within the school? Thanks.
So a couple of things there. One, um, absolutely. We need to develop ways to ensure that, that people who celebrate certain cultural or religious events, practices and carry those identities are not solely responsible for representing them or for educating around them or for leading the way, you know, a hundred percent. Um, that's part of why a first step towards this is to is to develop a sense of the highly varied celebrations and identities that are a part of our school district so that we can then as teams and as a community figure out appropriate, respectful ways to to participate in, to educate, to, to work within those areas. I think one example that, that I would use, um, is that even if a, a very first high level step was to begin to convey on a regular basis. Here are the various cultural and religious celebrations that are happening today. And to find authentic people within our world, not necessarily within our school buildings. Who work to convey information around those. And to perhaps check in with families. To say, you know, these are things that we're interested in doing. Now, it, it, yeah. Any advice, any input that you have, like, because they might have brought them to us. We, we'd be open to it, but to just start with that slice of making people aware of the breadth of things that are happening within our, our community and within the individ- with, across the individuals within our community. That's a first step, you know, expanding that to, um, international food festivals, culture, things that happen outside of school time. Oftentimes within, um, typically more urban school districts that, that have become great at this. You know, those are areas to approach that, that will take more time, that, that will take a community of people interested in trying to figure out how to organize events and how to do things. But, but, but I think a first step is collecting information, conveying, trying to figure out how to, how to at least make sure that people are aware of the breadth of what exists within us and, and in the greater world. Um, and that is already happening in a number of different ways within our school buildings. Um, but doing it in a way that, that, that has the weight of this is something that is very intentional district wide. That is programmatic, um, is really, really what I would, what I would hope to see out of, um, this coming year. Did that, I think that addressed one of your questions. I'm not sure it addressed both, but, um, in terms of legality of bringing religion into classrooms, I think that's a depth of conversation that I'm probably not prepared to have, have tonight, but, but I would say that the first step is is awareness, which is very different from how encouraging celebration of a religious event within within the school day, which is, you know, that's pretty far removed from what I would suggest would happen, um, at this level.
Right. No, it'd be great to know what we can do within, uh, within the limits of the law or whatever. Um, and my last question was, can you drop this presentation into our packet?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
This will head into the packet later tonight.
Jose.
Yeah, I'm I'm happy to to wait since I've already asked a question if others have a question they'd like to ask. Not to put anyone on the spot. All right. Thanks, Christina. This is echoing, I think, something that Julia had asked you, Joe, earlier. And this, this goes, I think it's, it's for all of us here, but. Then it's, it's around the issue of trust. You know, and that trust isn't given, it has to be earned. And for many of our, all of our families who who trust. Us with their kids, particularly for our fa- our families of color. You know, it's, it's hard not to get emotional about this, but you know, what I'm, what I would like to hear is, is what we can do. To continue earning that trust. Fostering that trust and 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 growing that trust. And I, and I think part of that for me, from my perspective is. Can continually being transparent about our process, about our progress. And about all the issues that might arise or or certainly will arise as we, as we, as we strive to do better. So I'm curious about how. Or whether we will in our regular school committee meetings, or if this is going to be, you know, something that. We can, we can build into our calendar, you know, opportunities for us to, you know, to share with our community. You know, where we are in 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 this journey.
And and I, I think it would be valuable to get input as to. What forms, what productive forms that can take. I am certainly willing to, a- as often as the school committee is is interested, appear on the agenda with. With questions and answers and and with. Tagged pieces within the the broad survey that I just shared, areas of movement, things that, things that are happening. I'm, I'm very willing to do that, but but if there are other ways that 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 can should be done, I'm open to them. And then just to, just to hit, I think, what. My, my greatest pause as as you started was. I I am not the, the leader for this work. That the community needs for sure. I I think I'm very willing to to fill as much of that role as I can here over the next year. But I I don't make any. Any false presentations that somehow. It's a, it's a title or a, or a role that that is. Just by my face worthy of, you know, I I am not worthy of that type of role, so. But I do think that the things that I put forward are things where. We can authentically create change that builds trust and builds relationships. Only by doing, and and so that's, you know.
No, I I really appreciate you bringing it up, Joe, because, you know. The issues of bias and prejudice and and racism that. Have arisen and and arise in our district just reflects. The issues we we deal with in our community broadly. And, you know, I think if we were really serious about. Addressing these issues, you know, it has to happen, you know. The district has to be a partner in that with our communities. And I think that's something I hope and always aspire. You know, that our communities take, take seriously and create opportunities for reflection and for for action. But thank you for bringing that up. That's a great point.
Joe, if I could, I just want to express my thanks for for this and presenting this framework. This is maybe a very simplistic way of thinking about this, but I think of. The school committee and the district. Team as homeowners. And Mount Greylock is our home and it's our association. And by creating this framework, we have, we've started to, you know. Lay the foundation and and even put up some of the sticks to the home. And hopefully by by doing this and by being transparent and by building that trust. We're really going to lay the groundwork for the future director of DEIB. So when they come in, they have those teams, they have that support, they have that trust. They're not starting, they're not starting from a builder, a building lot with trees that they have to clear. It's our, we've already started that process. So so thank you and and I really appreciate that.
Christina, I wonder if it would make sense to have a standing report. For, you know, on the monthly agenda. IB report.
Is that something that? Jake and Joe, you'd be comfortable. Providing on a. Each agenda? Awesome. Julia.
So. Thank you for all of this thoughtfulness and your responses to all of these questions. And I did a little bit of looking back at the superintendent's goals and thinking about where the crosswalks are between this. Document that you shared and the superintendent's goals. And I, and I, the, the thing about. Goals that I find so important is that if, that it's a way that we all keep ourselves marching in the same direction. And and there are times where we have to step back and say, maybe something can't be a goal right now. And that's okay, because we're, we've agreed, we're walk, marching in this direction. And the one in the goal set that I I don't see a crosswalk with, that I just want to raise for our committee to, and and Jake. Is the looking at the start time for the day, and I might be wrong. You know, or I may be missing the crosswalk. Or maybe that one is like, it's, I mean, it, it's a big lift if that word ever happened. And so I I just want to raise that and say, is that something we should not? Ask the team to focus on so that we can be doing, making sure we're focused in all the ways that you've described.
It's a financial lift. I- i- it's a financial lift that would be awkward to achieve within the budget environment that we're in right now. And that virtually every way to try to tackle a change in start times involves a significant increase in transportation costs. That, that's my, like, throwing on my. My finance hat for a second, but I I know that Jake was about to speak to it probably on a, on a much more. Spiritual level.
I was going to say just about the same thing, that it is, you know, it's, it's also the one that I would struggle to find a crosswalk. Be- between. You know, where where we've been putting our time and energy, which is primarily into things associated with making. The schools more welcoming, more responsible, more responsible, more responsive. To the needs of our, of our families and our children. And and that one does tie in in that it does strike me that there's enough research out there to suggest there is a need for adolescents to have. More sleep. However, tha- that is a magnificently big lift with with a bunch of pieces needing to come together. Both in the communities and within the school community very specifically. And. It's one I I would be open to to. Putting on a back burner or saying a not now. Be just simply because of the complexity and that at the end of the day. The answer is still likely to be not now.
I, I don't know if we can have that discussion today to adjust your goals, right? Because, you know, but I.
Not on the agenda.
I ask that that be a future agenda, to just make that explicit so that. There's no need for the team to think about how they're going to report on that. The public isn't expecting, you know, we decide where where we're at. So if that could be on a future agenda, that'd be great.
Thank you, Julia. Any other questions for Jake and Joe? Okay, thank you very much, Joe. Moving on to the next agenda item, field and track project funding update. Carrie, is this you?
Probably, but there are a bunch of us here that can speak to this. So there are warrant articles in both towns, as as you all know. To support the borrowing for the field and track project. Joe created this great QR code, which is printed on. Business cards along with the town meeting dates, thanks to Julia, we have those. And there's also a website which has the FAQ. It's on the Mount Greylock, so Joe created this, and if you go to the district pages and then. The school committee and then scroll down, you'll see there's a track and field project. And if you scan the QR code, you'll go to that same. Website and here's the URL. So yes, lots of different ways to get to it. And so what we've been doing is going out in both towns, both our member towns to. Sporting events, to the transfer stations, to the post office, to wherever people are. And handing out the cards, again, people can scan the QR code, bring, goes to the website. We've also been handing out the FAQs for track and field and for the stabilization fund. Just as a way to let people know that these warrant articles are coming up at town meeting to. Remind people to attend town meeting and to ask for their support on these warrant articles. What else do we want to say about this, at this moment?
I I think Williamstown Town Meeting's next Tuesday. That'll be the, that'll be the first, the first hurdle. For anybody listening, for anybody who who sees this later. Who who cares about whether or not this project happens, definitely come to town meeting. Definitely stand up and vote in favor of the authorization. And then we we collectively need to make a big push leading up to Lanesboro Town Meeting, which is about a month away right now. After that, and so that those are the, those are the biggest hurdles that we have ahead here, no pun intended. But but then immediately following those, hopefully assuming all goes well. It w- w- will continue the the push around additional fundraising to decrease the amount that actually gets borrowed to complete the project. Along with preparing to get the bids, the bids going in the fall and winter.
Right, so for those. Who aren't sure about the actual dates, so May sixteenth, Tuesday, May sixteenth, I think. There was an article or the, somewhere I heard that it was. Monday, May sixteenth, I think it might have been on WAMC, they said. That it was next Monday, but it's not next Monday, it's next Tuesday. It's Tuesday, May sixteenth, it's at Mount Greylock. And we will have information available at the. You know, outside of town meeting about the warrant articles as well. Questions?
Okay.
Carrie, just a quick one, can you clarify? Someone asked me this today, are there two warrant articles at the Williamstown meeting tied to the track project or just the one?
So there's one warrant article on the track and field project, there is a second warrant article on the stabilization fund. And then there is a third warrant article on the budget. In Williamstown, there is a fourth warrant article which will come, I believe, at the end regarding the CPC funding. For the track and field project. So there are actually four. That would be the second one related to the track and field. We would also ask that that folks support, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And then I think I said this already, but if I didn't, the Lanesboro Town Meeting is June thirteenth. All right, so we can move on to the next item, I think. Which is finance committee. All right, so we talked about this at the Williamstown Finance Committee Meeting. Ursula wasn't able to be there and Steve isn't here, so I'm actually the only one who has seen this. But Joe has another graphic here, right? The Williamstown Select Board met on April twenty-fourth to talk about. The use or the distribution of their remaining ARPA funds. And they ended up voting to approve three hundred thousand dollars in. What they determined was about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That they had left to decide on. They committed three hundred thousand of that to the Williamstown Elementary Playgrounds. This isn't something that we've talked about in these meetings. Partly because. The district actually put in for these funds when ARPA was first announced, so this is several years ago. And it wasn't really talked about. We, and in fact, the discussion around needing to make the playgrounds more accessible. Is quite a bit older than that. It started several years even prior to. The putting in of the request for ARPA funds. So this conversation has been kicking around for a long time, but then when it. Looked like the town was going to have a discussion about the ARPA funds, we reminded them that we had put in this. Request a couple of years ago and would they please, you know, think about honoring it? Because it is something that the town would have had to pay for anyway. Right? Because the town is responsible for the grounds and repairs above a certain amount. That kind of thing. So they they did vote the three hundred thousand. The cost is probably upwards of four fifty, five hundred, something like that for both playgrounds. So it looks like the three hundred thousand will at least allow us to get most of the way on the older kids. Playground. And then there might need to be some fundraising for that, but the goal is to do that this summer. It's the kind of thing where you take the old playground away, you redo the, the base. And then you bring in the new playground and and there may be some low-cost elements to the playground as well. Worked into the landscape, so I know Joe and Jake and others are working on that. But we're, we're a good chunk of the way there with this, so. Part of the discussion that we're having within the district is we need to look at the. Williamstown Elementary Campus as a whole, and that's what you're seeing here. So we've got playing fields that need to be upgraded and and redone. They're used quite heavily, they're the most heavily used recreational facilities in town. So they're going to need some attention. The older ages playground, the one in purple, that's the one that we're talking about, probably redoing first. There is a younger kids playground also in purple above that. And then Joe has in green over on. The left of the screen, what does that say? Garden and gazebo. And then I'm guessing the blue above that, is that where you're thinking? Is a new?
Well, so the 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 three spaces that are in teal there are spaces that were originally conceived as outdoor classroom type.
Oh, okay.
Spaces. I think some of the. Spaces. I think some of those could, could live more fully as outdoor classrooms. The, the large rectangle there up above the garden and gazebo. I think we're, we're looking at a wide variety of options. There are certainly people in town who want to see various recreational facilities constructed within town using other town funds that have been earmarked. And so we're trying to figure out what kinds of things we could facilitate there, because right now it's really underutilized space right within the center of town. And if it's something that could benefit the community, summer use, as well as physical education within the school, we're all for it. And so we're, we're we're trying to approach this saying, we, we don't want to just redo what was done for, for sure. And we, we don't want to be the group that five years from now, somebody says, well, why did they just go off and do that? Why didn't they think about X or Y or Z? So we're trying to make sure that we approach it with, with that kind of a, kind of a thought process. But everything that's highlighted here, those are really the spaces that we have to work with. And we definitely want to make sure that nobody has any fear that somehow the soccer, lacrosse and baseball fields that are there will, will be weakened or lessened by any work. If anything, they will be improved and, and it'll be part of that overall master plan to try to upgrade since they are so heavily used by those groups pretty much all year round.
The main issue, one of the main issues besides age, the older kids playground, actually neither playground is accessible at this current time. So anyone with any kind of physical disability would have a very hard time using these playgrounds if they could use them at all. So it's, it's something that, that folks in the community have been, have been advocating for for quite some time. And one of the comments that has come out of select board discussions is, you know, it's, it's important to think about recreation for young people, but we also need to be thinking about recreation for adults in the community. And that's one of the reasons that we're highlighting that large teal rectangle in the upper left to, to try to think about that, to broaden the use of the downtown facilities. We know that the track that we're planning to construct at Mount Greylock will also be open for use by community members of both our member towns. And Joe, can you, or, or Jake, can you remind us where, where do we stand with the Lanesboro Playground? Is that also one that needs to be redone due to age and accessibility?
We, we put in a similar request to Lanesboro for ARPA funds use. The, the, the Lanesboro play spaces are something that will have to be addressed ultimately in the future. Their condition is a little better. The, the use, trying to think of how to say this, the Williamstown Elementary School Playground really serves as the town's playground. It's, it's central in the town. It's an area where lots of people cross when they're walking back and forth between neighborhoods and, and the college and the downtown. So the, those playscapes get a lot of heavy-duty use. Lane Spurrows in a little better shape. Another challenge that we have that would, that's particular to Williamstown Elementary School is the, the older ages playground in purple that Joe has identified serves not only the, the school and the town, but also in an ideal world, the Williamstown Youth Center and its after-school and summer programs. Right now, they, those, the students who go for formal programming at the youth center are not allowed to use the playground because it's not licensed. It's a different licensing agency. It's the Early Childhood Education and Care licenses the space for their use. So a student can use it at 1 o'clock or 2 o'clock in the afternoon from Wes, a third grader. They go to the Williamstown Youth Center after school and they're not allowed to use it. And that's because of the underneath surface, the wood chips. And that's, that's something that, that, that will be addressed through this project. So ultimately, Carrie, yes, Lanesboro's play spaces will both, both the older students and the, the element, the, the pre-K and K space will need it. But not with the urgency that the Williamstown spaces do.
Okay. So that, this is by way of information and are there any questions? Okay. The next item is the timeline for the borrowing. So Joe, do you want to share that document as well? It's in your packets. And it's something that I think the committee has seen. I know it had gone to the Finance Committee previously. But it outlines the final borrowing timeline. And it, it basically states that, you know, come June, we need to vote and execute the bond documents. And Joe is, he's, yep, there it is. Thank you. So Joe, you've been talking to bond council, correct? And this is Unibank. We also had a really nice conversation with the mass development, economic development folks, or actually remind me of the organization. But they're, they're a nonprofit that helps organize other nonprofits and organizations and sometimes municipalities and schools to get good rates on bonds. So we're in conversation with them as well. But just looking to, we're gonna be looking to refinance some of our bonds in the spring. So Joe, do you want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, I, I, the, the, the top level thing is we're going through a process here this month that prepares us for getting bids in from borrowers so that on June 8th, during the school committee meeting, we should be able to review the results of that process and vote to execute the bonding of, of the final borrowing for the building project. In terms of refinancing, that's something that, that will become an opportunity in a couple of years and depending upon where interest rates go. That will dictate whether we try to lump together our 2016 borrowing with this borrowing potentially, along with potentially the borrowing related to the field and track project, if there are creative ways for us to get it all together and to decrease the impact on our towns as a result of, of taking a look at all of our borrowing in a, in a more synthesized way. But this is mostly an information item tonight to let you know that next month, the, the process, this formally, the completion of the, the building project and, and its financing, that, that'll be done next month.
All right, and there is another item on the agenda that's an authorization to borrow. But that's a different kind of borrowing and we'll talk about that in just a sec. So Ursula, would you like to move this next one? I know you weren't at the meeting, but I did say that, you know, because finance had already reviewed these that we would move them. So this is the motion to appoint Donna Neri as the District Treasurer and Rena Sharma as the Assistant Treasurer of the Mount Greylock Regional School District.
I will make that motion.
And would anyone like to second it?
I'll second.
Okay, so this is an annual appointment. We voted pretty much the same motion last year. Same people, right? Yep. So is there any discussion on this item? All right. Roll call, all in favor?
Oh, and I.
Henry, I.
Constance, I.
Elfenbein, I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Great, thank you. That is unanimous. And then finally, this is the one I just mentioned. So this motion to borrow is not the kind of borrowing that we were talking about for capital projects. This is for operational expenses in the event that, you know, the state is late getting us its Chapter 70 funds or the 71 funds or either town is late for whatever reason with the, their contribution to the, the district. So this gives authorization for the folks that we just voted on. Or Donna, I think more specifically, the District Treasurer. Well, no, actually, I see either one of them to borrow just to get through, say, a payroll period or something like that so that we don't ever lose a payroll period because of shortage of funds. So would anyone like to move this one and probably you should read that paragraph if you would like to move it?
I'll move it, Carrie. Let me just read it real quick. So I will make the motion to authorize the District Treasurer and/or the Assistant Treasurer under the provisions of the General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 16G as amended by Chapter 134 of the Act of 1972, with the approval of the Chair of the School Committee to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of revenue for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023, and to issue a note or notes as may be given for a period of less than one year in accordance with the general law.
Thank you, Ursula. Would anyone like to second that?
Second that.
Okay, thanks. Is there any discussion on this? Again, this is something that we vote annually. So it may look familiar. All right, no discussion, roll call.
Bo and I.
Henry, I.
Constance, I.
Elfenbein, I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
And that motion passes. Thanks, and I think that's it for finance.
Great, thank you, Carrie. Next on the agenda, Policy and Governance Subcommittee Report. So we will turn it over to the Chair of that Subcommittee, Jose.
Thank you, Christina. Our Subcommittee hasn't met since the last full committee meeting, but I, I think we're more than ready to hear the lovely voice of Mr. Elfenbein here. Go ahead and provide a first read of Policy DK, Curtis.
You are the best hyped man I've ever encountered in my life. Thank you so much. Proposed Policy DK, Regional School District Payment Procedures. All claims for payment from the school district's funds will be processed in accordance with regulations developed by the Superintendent. Payment will be authorized against invoices properly supported by approved purchase orders with properly submitted vouchers or in accordance with salaries and salary schedules approved by the school committee. As an operating procedure, the committee will receive lists of bills and payroll documents, warrants, for payment from school department funds typically bi-weekly. The list will be, the list will be certified as correct by the District Treasurer and approved for payment by the Chair of the Finance Subcommittee. Recent lists will be reviewed by the Finance Subcommittee during its regular meetings. The lists, actual invoices, statements and vouchers will be made available for review and inspection by the school committee. The Superintendent will be responsible for assuring that budget allocations are observed and the total expenditures do not exceed the amount allocated in the budget for all items.
Thank you, Curtis. Any comments or feedback on this? We'll clearly, this will be on the schedule for the Finance and Governance Subcommittee to, to look at. So Carrie and/or Joe, anything that you, you'd like us to consider? I'm assuming this will just pop right back up at our next full committee meeting.
I'm gonna ask a question, Jose, and I realize that this sounds really stupid, but I'm gonna ask it anyway because maybe I'm not the only one thinking it. Isn't this what we do today?
No, yeah.
I, I'm a little, is this an update or please help me?
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
There, there are two things there. One is, it's pretty similar to what we do today. And an effort in revising this policy is to make sure that our practice of many years aligns with our policy. The way that it is different, though, is it does, it does create more flexible for the finance, more flexibility for the Finance Subcommittee in that the Finance Subcommittee could be, can, could begin to meet monthly as opposed to every two weeks in lockstep. In the interim, the Finance Subcommittee Chair would be responsible for reviewing and saying, yes, it, it, it's okay to get these out. Meanwhile, the accountability then goes through the layer of the Finance Subcommittee with a dedicated review monthly. And it, this makes it a little bit more explicit that we would continue our practice of having the warrants available as a digital packet and we would make sure that the school committee knows that it's been updated. You can jump in there, review. The natural thing would be to then ask me or to ask Jake questions if any school committee had, if any school committee member had questions. So to try to embrace the, the onion approach to reviewing warrants that allows the Finance Subcommittee Chair to make sure that things happen in timely manner. The Finance Subcommittee has dedicated responsibility for a detailed review and that the school committee very explicitly has regular access and is, and is ideally, everybody's opening up the packet every couple of weeks to take a look. And if they have questions, making sure to call it out because that would be a chance for, if it ever were to happen, for me, for Jake, to then jump in and say, oh, let's, let's hold that up. You're right, you, you've made a good point. Let's, let's re-review that internally rather than letting it go out. So that's the rationale here. But part of it is we're trying to catch up with, with where we've always been.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah.
Julia.
I how are we? I should know this, Ursula, just so I thought this might have been the question you were gonna ask and it's not, darn it. How are, how and when are we audited and how do our auditors feel about this policy?
We are audited annually. Our audit for FY22 is just getting polished up right now, actually. Our auditors are, have been thankfully quite, I'm knocking on wood here, quite, quite happy with our, with our procedures and, and with our results. In terms of how they would feel about, because I, I have not explicitly shown them this copy. But this copy aligns directly with the Massachusetts General Laws requirements and recommendations for how a school district should conduct its business. So on the strength of that and our own legal counsel having reviewed and, and advised on this, that's how we're bringing this forward. So it's, it's all in line with the state's laws and requirements. And we just make a little bit more explicit, the various layers of review as opposed to the, the state's laws would say that you can designate one person to review and approve. And the school committee needs to have access to and, and should be made aware of the warrants during their next regular meeting. That, that's the, that's my since, that's my kind of description of what the state's laws say. But, but it's gone through other layers of review too.
Any other questions or, or comments regarding this policy or how or what's being currently implemented? All right, that's it from us, Christina.
Thank you. Next up, Business Administrator Report. That's you, Joe.
All right, so spring update, because we're, we're about to get some, some hot weather coming through. That is thankful for Lanesboro Elementary School and that the boiler replacement project, it's not quite complete yet. We're, we're still running on, on one boiler. The boiler that shipped, meaning boiler number two that was scheduled for replacement that we started working on early last summer and project is dragging on here. When it shipped, it arrived with some inappropriate parts, given the installation that, that it was supposed to see. So we've been going back and forth on that. Our contractors have been trying to make sure that, that it gets done here in, in a high quality and, and as timely as can be manner. But it's just a, a word of Um, in, in a high quality and, and as timely as can be manner. Um, but it's just a, a word of um, note for all of you that thankfully it has not hindered our ability to function over the last few weeks. Um, and it's something that we're continuing to stay on top of and, and it should be done shortly. Um, that's Lanesboro Elementary School. Any questions about Lanesboro Elementary School facilities from all of you? I'll take each school in turn. Mount Greylock Regional School, um, people recently noticed uh, that we needed to redo a concrete pad that um, covers our oil tanks on campus in the parking lot. Um, that work was needed because um, this was a portion of the um, campus that was not uh, redone as a part of the building project in, in uh, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Um. The concrete pad had um, cracked enough that water was infiltrating down and around the oil tanks, creating a situation where if we weren't careful, water could get into the oil tanks when people went to fill them. Um, so it was really a, a critical fix, critical um, replacement that we did. Um, that's that project, just in case anybody in the public uh, saw people working out there for a couple of weeks, a few weeks ago. Um, and uh, I think that's the that's the critical one for Mount Greylock Regional School. Any, any questions on Mount Greylock? And then Williamstown Elementary School, the HVAC system, um, the project that was authorized by the school committee last spring. Um, and for which uh, parts were not scheduled to arrive until late in the fall. Um, that project is uh, coming to completion now. Um. Once again, that was one where parts that were supposed to arrive in the fall did not arrive until uh, just a few weeks ago. Um, so thankfully, we did not need the cooling and dehumidification that those systems um, will provide. And uh, as of right now, um, those systems are done. Uh, we are going through the inspection and commissioning process. Um, and we expect that to yield a, a better quality HVAC system in terms of um, dehumidification and what's actually air tempering rather than cooling. Um, but it does significantly decrease the temperature of the air that's flowing through the building, which is why I refer to it in a more layperson's term of cooling. Um, that system should be better than it's ever been. Um, pretty soon here to welcome in the warm weather that we are about to receive. Um, any questions on Williamstown Elementary? And then my final facilities update, which spans the two elementary schools. Um, you might have noticed that the state recently announced a potential program around um, uh, being able to fund school projects where if schools um have roofs that are over twenty years old and the schools have solar projects that they can complete in the near term on those roofs. The state might, if the governor's budget goes through, the state might uh, be willing to fund the roof if we find a way to fund the solar. Um, we're working with a number of solar developers to try to make sure that, um, we've already submitted uh, letters of interest to the state if the program is approved. Um, if all goes swimmingly, which it never does, um, we might end up being able to say we have solar project project developers who we have lined up, the state is ready to fund um, renewal of our two elementary schools roofs and we will cover those roofs with solar. If all goes swimmingly, that's what I'll be saying in July or August and say like, this is a project that we need to do. Um, but there are so many things left that might get in the way of us saying that. I just didn't want to surprise you in July saying guess what? We're about to get new roofs on our two elementary schools and, and have you not know how that might have happened. That's it.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, school committee retreat. Um, I wanted to thank Carol for sending out the poll and for Julia for pushing me to do that. So that we could get, we could not do what happened this winter and actually get it um, on our calendars. Unfortunately, we can't all be there. Um, but this was the date that the majority of us could get to um, in the summer. Um, it is a Tuesday, uh, and we have it on the calendar as five to nine and that would be an in-person um, meeting in the room, who's number I can't remember right now, but we'll get it out there. I should remember it, but it's been so long. And then I, I do want to say that if any of those members that can attend would like to attend, we could probably do some kind of laptop head situation, um, not, nothing fancy um, in terms of a hybrid, but we could probably um, pull that off if people are available, just not in town. Carrie?
Will someone outside the district be facilitating this retreat?
Not that I am aware of.
Okay, so this is just us.
Yeah. Any other questions on that? Julia.
Um, I feel like over the last year, we've talked about different content that might be covered at that retreat. Is there, should we send you thoughts and ideas if we had something or do you know what's gonna, how, what is gonna cover?
I think that's a great idea. If, if, cause we have had various discussions and we did have at our last retreat, we framed what we wanted to cover in our next. Um. So we can look back at that and still, and see if that's still appropriate or if there are other things that we want to um to address in that meeting. Thanks, Julia. I don't know why I just muted myself. That was really odd. I think I'm a little tired. Okay, so, um, M A S E division update, Carrie.
I don't have an update this week or this month.
That makes it even faster. Um, okay, upcoming meetings, Williamstown Town Meeting, Tuesday, May sixteenth Mount Greylock Campus. The next finance subcommittee meeting, May eighteenth and June first at four P M. The next policy and governance subcommittee is May twenty-fourth at five P M. The next regular school committee meeting is June eighth at six P M. And the Lanesboro Town Meeting is Tuesday, June thirteenth. Lanesboro, Williamstown, please go to town meeting and vote. Okay. I will come off that soapbox. Go vote, please. Um, other items for just
Sorry, Christina, I'm, I'm realizing it, it's also a little confusing. Williamstown is, is starting at seven.
Okay.
Lanesboro is starting at six, so that's
Yeah, we didn't have those times posted. Thank you. Um, I have no other items. Any agenda requests other than Julia's agenda request to adjust the superintendent's goals in a future meeting? Okay. Um, all right, I would like to make a motion to enter into executive session with no intent to return to open session pursuant to MGL chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, all non-union staff contracts.
Second.
Julia seconds. All in favor?
Bo and I.
Henry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin by an I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Hey, thank you. It is eight thirty-seven. We are moving into executive session. Um, we will declare our aloneness once we get there. Um, let's see. Need to stop the recording. Or actually, I don't want to do that. I want to pause the recording. No, I want to stop the recording.